All right, it's 12:01, I think.
All right.
I think we're, um. Without further ado.
Yeah. Yeah, um, let's see, I guess I'd like to welcome everybody out to uh the Geotechnical Advisory Commission uh work session. Uh so today, we won't be necessarily voting on anything, but we'll be discussing a couple um items. Um, I guess, do we want to take attendance, Daniel?
Sue, do we take attendance? Yeah, I guess I'll just.
Yeah, you do. Well, you can. You don't have to officially. I have them marked down.
All right, I'll just rip, just for the recording, I see here, we have Amy Steiner, Melisa Bab, Wayne Boland, Brian O'Dowd, Cody Cartel, David Hempstreet. Oh. Oh, thanks. Okay, sorry, uh Dennis Berry. Not here. Uh Kyle Brennan.
Yep, I'm here.
Kyle's here. Stephen Howcome.
I'm here.
Stephen's here. Dave Hempstreet.
I'm here.
He's here. Cody Cartel.
Here.
Carrie Nutter.
Here.
Right. Brian O'Dowd.
Here.
Amy Steiner.
Here.
John Thornley.
Here.
And I am Daniel McKenna Foster. We have Melisa Bab, the Planning Director. I don't know if Ryan Yell joined us. Looks like he didn't. Ryan, are you here? No. Uh Wayne Boland, Wayne, are you there?
I'm here.
Wayne is here. Grant, is Grant Gephardt here?
No.
No. Daniel King.
I am here.
And Tim Hunting? Okay, no Tim.
Nope.
Okay, we, we have a group.
All right. Thanks. All right, good deal. Uh so let's see, today, um, we're gonna start off with uh with talking about this resolution for uh recommending minimum onsite exploration for geotechnical reports or for required geotechnical reports. Um, and uh there was uh some, some information that was uh was shared uh uh earlier, I believe, earlier today. Uh thanks Sue for sending that out um with the, with some background information about what others are doing. We kinda, we kinda danced around, so, so we, two, two meetings ago, we took a crack at uh at crafting some language here. Um, and then last meeting, uh we uh kinda uh did a little bit of existential discussion, you know, do we, do we need this or not? And, and so, I guess, uh, you know, first, maybe first and foremost, maybe we just need to have a, a quick discussion about, you know, whether the GAC wants to uh, you know, continue down this path of developing this uh resolution, right? Uh make sure we're all on the same page there, or, or uh, you know, have kind of a uh, you know, uh, a desire to continue this, and then, and then let's get cracking if we do, so. I don't know if, if uh people wanna uh kinda throw out any, any thoughts, any heartburn about this resolution, or uh, you know, have any discussion about, uh, you know, some of the um different jurisdictions that, that we threw in as examples. I, I could start uh with uh, I think, you know, one thing that I, I did was I went back and I looked at the commentary uh for uh the International Building Code. Chapter eighteen, or, you know, section eighteen oh three, and um in the packet, I highlighted a couple items that I thought were uh interesting. Um, I don't know if, Daniel, if you have those handy? To throw up on the screen, or if you want me to?
No, I'm, I, yeah, I'm looking for them. I will bring them up.
Cause I think, I think, uh, you know, the uh, i- if anything, I think the building code uh commentary says it pretty well uh with the the intention of, of, of the section without really spelling it out in the code itself.
All right, I'm just, I'm gonna go from your emails to funny.
Which section of the commentary?
Uh, chapter eighteen oh three. Um, I, and I've got it on my, I've got it on my screen here, if you want me to share it, or.
Yeah. Is this the one?
Uh, yes, yep. So this is, this is kinda what we're talking about here. Um, and the, the highlighted section said, there are two main objectives for conducting a soils investigation. The first is of uh confirmatory nature. Uh, its purpose is to obtain information already known from adjacent structures such as soil boring records, field test uh results, laboratory test data analyses, and any other knowledge uh useful uh in the design of foundation system. Right? I mean, so like the, the, the first thing that it says is, you know, that you should be doing something on your site uh just to confirm that uh, you know, the stuff you know, uh, say, AKA, the, the, the geotechnical uh boring database uh that, that we query regularly has uh or indeed does hold up. So, so I think, uh, you know, that's, that's kind of a, uh, an interesting piece. And part of my uh thought process upon reading this was do we need a resolution? Because this is the intent of the, the commentary, and shouldn't this uh Daniel King be enough for you to say, hey? Uh, you know, uh, the intent of the building code, if you're following it, is to, to do onsite uh exploration, so.
Well, you read, that, that, that is the in- intent, but if you read the exception in the geotechnical investigations, we can waive the requirement for geotechnical investigations if enough information already exists from nearby sites. Right? And that is the gray that, that I'm asking you guys to weigh in on is, 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 is that valid? Um, is there something that we need specific to point out that if you're in these areas, this is why it's required to do site-specific investigations? Because it says, "The building official shall be permitted to waive the requirement for a geotechnical investigation where satisfactory data from adjacent areas is available that demonstrates an investigation is not necessary for any of the conditions in section eighteen oh three five one through eighteen oh three five six and three five ten to three five eleven." So, so it says, don't, you don't have to do it, there's enough information that exists, so. So to define that.
Yeah, do you want a resolution to take away those rights, then? Is that the?
No, no, and tha- that's why I'm asking you guys to weigh in, because you're saying that they, that shouldn't exist, you should have to do it. Um, and I, I originally came in with the intent to have, have that clarified, that if you are finding that there's enough information, then you don't need to do it. You, as the geotech, can decide that if there's enough information um to allow them to use existing borehole data, right? As, as, as been, as was said by a commenter, um, you know, you, if you do a tabletop study, and you find that there's enough existing information, and it's a small enough risk, then you can choose to say, hey, we don't need to do it. Um, but you, you are coming back saying that it needs to be done, and that's why I was requesting that, this resolution, because then that, it gives us the enforcement to do what you were saying is necessary, which is you need to do these things, at least in these zones, at least in these areas. We are, we are gonna say, there is not enough existing data to support it without doing additional testing.
Yeah.
And then to define what is that additional testing that we want, because there's not enough existing data. So. A general resolution saying geotech needs to do geotech uh is not what I'm seeking. But to define when, when, when is it okay, because this is really open-ended. It's like, do geotech investigations unless you don't need to do geotech investigations. And if we wanna leave it at that, then we can, but that's going to leave it open for people, what I would think makes sense, is that you could use existing borehole data, if you find, as the geotech, that that data is adequate. Because it's existing data that's already out there, you don't need to go do more boreholes for a residential project, unless you are saying that, no, we don't think that's enough information. I need your guys' support on that end for these specific areas.
Yeah.
You know?
My, sorry, Daniel, on my, my recollection is that the requirements in our, in, in the Muni code is for the investig- geotech investigations in basically the BSSA. So this is kind of a limited geographic resolution.
Anything within, anything within the BSSA that's in seismic hazard zone four or five is required to have a geotech report. And then from that geotech report, whatever's decided is what has to get built, right? And, and what we've had is some people are using existing borehole data uh off of our borehole map to, to say, hey, we think that we don't need to do additional investigation and, on these sites. And so I brought this to the GAC to say, hey, is this acceptable? Um, you know, should we, should we clarify our intent saying, hey, you don't, you can use existing borehole data? If it, if there's enough evidence for you as the geotech to say it, at least on residential properties. And then still further define that commercial properties, we have a higher standard, we would expect site-specific investigations be done. Or should they not be using the borehole data, and they have to do site-specific on every project? Um, and then to clarify maybe where that, where that site-specific is going to be required, you know, as you were saying, John, the, the, the Turnigan Slide area where we have a bunch of garbage that's in there, do we need to better define where we're going to require you to actually do site-specific? Cause there's a lot of areas in town that are four or five that aren't in Turnigan. You know, I think, I think you guys were mentioning before that there's parts that are four and five that, that GAC thinks should be removed from the four and five map, uh, from the hazard map as four or fives, because there's been enough data to prove that they aren't uh seismic hazard four or five. You know, and I don't wanna penalize those people for living in those areas when there's enough evidence that says that they aren't a hazard. So. Yeah.
Amy, does that help answer your question?
Yeah, um, I, so I guess kind of what I'm dancing around a little bit, and I apologize, I, I don't know if, if it got discussed last, uh, at, at the last meeting. Um, but is one path forward here to say, hey, if you're building new construction in, or like whatever expansions in some square footage in these, you know, zones four or five, you need to produce a geotech report, and, you know, the GAC, if you don't do an investigation and rely solely on historic info, you know, it needs to be reviewed and greenlit by whatever, a, a peer review, or, you know, the GAC, or whatever.
Yeah, and I, I'd be fine with that. The only thing I'd be worried about is a slowdown um when that comes through, is, is having it have to go to the GAC or an ad hoc uh review body slowing down the project getting done. I'm fine with that. I, I just wanna make sure that it's not going to, to lag. I know some of our reviews that come to the GAC will take months uh to, to get a consensus from the body, and I wanna make sure that we're not gonna hold up a residential project for months, so that they don't have to do a borehole on their site.
Yeah, and I guess my, my thought is, you know, you, we have the option already for independent structural review, right? So, I guess I would kind of envision this being a similar independent geotech review for these very specific locations. Or like whatever zone, four and five. I, I don't know, I don't, I don't.
Yeah.
Uh, Dave, could I try a minute here? Yeah, I don't think the, the intent of the body is to be um put to work reviewing, like, you know, case-by-case permits, you know, to give green lights or red lights. Um, and I think we should honestly have respect enough for the profession too, um, and the, the kind of self-governing um aspect of the, you know, the Board of Engineers to um, to kind of police, you know, the, the bad actors. I know, you know, we've all got stories about how it doesn't work sometimes, but um, I think requiring a, a geotech report is, is is probably enough, and let the, the geotech stamp, or, you know, civil stamp on there um take the burden of uh making sure it's right, and it's on, you know, you have the option to, uh, you know, I guess, waive something, but um, you know, if something looks, looks bad, or something comes in and looks obviously wrong, you can intervene, but, on a case-by-case basis, but generally, I think that, you know, if, if the geotech comes in and says, yeah, I looked at it, it looks fine, you know, and um, we should, generally, that should be enough. I mean, if we try to micromanage, you know, every, everything in here down to the, you know, down to the grain of soil, um, it's just gonna be way, way too burdensome. So I'm, I'm in favor of, like, no change, uh, let the geotech report, let the geotech engineer determine whether or not the information is adequate or not, and if they feel like they need, you know, more information, then they'll, you know, request it and um, you know, get it. And if they, you know, if they can't stamp something, then that's kind of on them to, to kind of show that it'll work. But um, I think putting on like a mandated extra boring, when clearly it would make no sense to me, um, is just gonna create, you know, more work and more expense, limit development.
Agreed. And, and should we put guardrails on that? For, for, i- in that, in that sense, for residential versus commercial construction, then? Residential being, being a lower risk than commercial, still requiring some sort of justification versus residential projects, it's a usually single-family up to duplex, a triplex construction now.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm speaking like purely in the residential realm, where, you know, I think um the risk of, you know, failure, you know, I, we've seen a lot of these homes, you know, where you get undermined by a river or something, and they stay completely intact, and they just kind of fall into the river, you know? So the idea of something, you know, if it's gonna, if you have it on a, you know, three-foot slab, as some of the people were suggesting we do last time, um, is uh um, you know, kind of overkill, you know, right? I mean, if your whole lot is like halfway down the hill, you know, it doesn't really matter if your structure is completely perfect. So I think, you know, the way they're built now, it's, as long as they're built to other, you know, code requirements, seems like they, they, they pretty much intact, you know? And uh, no one's gonna lose life, and, or the risk of that's, you know, pretty low, and people can get out afterwards, and um, you know, yeah, it might be a big mess, the whole lot, the whole area, neighborhood might be in shambles, but I think the, the primarily, we're, you know, concerned about loss of life, and not necessarily, um, you know, having zero damage to the neighborhood. And I think you mentioned that last, last week, that it's not really a concern, like, I don't think most commercial people are gonna, you know, go cheap on the, um, you know, the geotech and structural aspects.
For now, yeah. I mean, that, you know, I guess, you know, one of the, you know, one of the things that I keep coming back to is, is the, the data that, you know, is being used wasn't necessarily intended for that purpose. Um, and this is, this is the problem that I think I have, uh, you know, this is the biggest problem that I have uh with this issue, is that, that, you know, there, there are boring logs that have no, they have nothing attached to them other than they're graphic, um, and they've got some words. And, and that is, is now the, the minimum for, for somebody to go and, and do a design, is to go and grab some random graphics and words uh for a project they know nothing about. Uh, but it, geographically, it has something to do with their site uh in some way, and it could be, you know, a hundred feet away, it could be a thousand feet away, whatever. Um, and, and, and then they get to design whatever they're gonna design uh with, with that, that information. Um, and, and I guess, you know, that, that, this was a lot harder to do in the, back in the day. Um, because uh, you know, you didn't necessarily have uh, uh, quick access to uh this information, but uh, um, you know, I, you know, and sure, we could wait till the, the Board of Licensure decides that uh it's had enough of, of that practice. Um, but uh, I mean, is that, is that real? And is, you know, as, as, you know, an advisory commission, uh, you know, is that what we think, is we just wanna wait until somebody else deals with it? That's, I guess what I, you know, I, I have, those are my biggest problems, is that the, the data that was collected is not intended for a design of, of that, um, you know, of, of, of the, the, the work that's being done. And, and, you know, nobody cares, I guess. You know, that's, that's, that's where I get my biggest heartburn.
Yeah, I, I see that. I, I understand what you're saying, John. I guess I feel like this body should not be taking on the role of um engineering board, because we don't feel like they're doing enough of a job, and we shouldn't be trying to micromanage engineers, because there might be one out there that would, you know, make some uh shortcuts. So if there are, you know, engineers out there who, who do, you know, bad engineering, then I do think the place to, to uh, you know, remedy that is through the board, and not through, you know, punishing all the good engineers out there who, who do, do it, do it right, the right way. And punishing all homeowners and all future development.
Well, it has nothing to do with punishing development, development. I mean, it's, you know, I, uh, it's not, it's not stopping development. You know, it's, I don't, yeah, I don't quite agree with that, but.
Well, adding cost and time to development, which might make it prohibited for some people to do, so.
Well, and I, but I think I'd, I'd push back on it too, saying, you know, we're, we're, we're having this conversation because um, you know, the municipality has, has um has been dealing with what they perceive to be an issue uh with, with um some of the stuff that they're seeing, and so, you know, I think we're, we're being asked to help provide some guidance here, and, and maybe, maybe some, you know, some help for for the review, the people are doing reviews to, to, to be able to push back on some of this stuff if, if it's necessary, and so you know, I, I, I get what you're saying, Dave, that, you know, we don't wanna be, we don't wanna be engineer cops, but at the same time, you know, if the municipality feels like they, that they need to, to, you know, be, be bolstered here a little bit, so that they can, they can do something about what they say is, is potentially detrimental to, you know, quality development, health and safety, human, you know, public safety, and things like that. I think we're obligated to, you know, at least, you know, entertain the idea, talk about it, and if we think that there, that there's some merit to that, then, then provide them with what we think, and I, and I think, you know, I think that's, that's kind of what we're getting at here, not, not necessarily being engineer cops for engineer cop's sa- sake, you know?
Well, and to, to be clear, w- we're not seeing problems with what's being provided in general, beyond the fact that they're using existing borehole data when our existing borehole map says, don't use it, right? And so that's why we're coming to you, not because we're like, hey, they're providing insufficient designs, but to ask you guys, hey, is this a problem? You know, we don't see a problem necessarily, do you see a problem? So it's not that the, the Muni is saying, hey, we're, we're having problems with bad actors, we need your help, uh, we just need clarification on what the actors are supposed to be doing. You know, what the, what the intent is for, for this geotech review, um, when we look at a report, if they don't have i- investigations, should they be at least attesting that they, they don't have issues with the data that they're getting from existing data? That it says you need to make sure? Is, is okay?
Yeah, that's, that's interesting. I, I guess, you know, maybe, maybe putting words in your mouth, but, but when I hear, but when I hear, um, you know, hey, we're getting stuff where they're just relying on existing data from nearby sites, in my mind, that's a problem. And so maybe that's, maybe that's where I made that connection, um, and, yeah, so I, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, no, not, not to say that we are, we are saying, hey, we have a problem, it's more just like, hey, do we have a problem?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And I would say that the, the limitations uh attached to the geotechnical reports that those uh stick logs have been cherry-picked from would say you have a problem.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, and, and uh every lawyer uh that, that reads any of that uh would say you have a problem. So, and like, you know, it, it, you have a problem, and uh, and i- if, if people are relying on data that they don't own, uh, then you have a problem, so.
Yeah, I think those limitations are more for the, for the company that, you know, created, created the report and did the boring, just so they're not used, so they can't be liable for stuff that that's um outside of their, you know, patrol. But, you know, the homeowner would probably have issue with um a bad boring, and that's, I guess, where my thing is, it's like, if, if there's ever an issue, then going after the engineer of record who, who said something would be stable, and it wasn't, is um, you know, that's, there's, there's avenues for that, you know? Yeah, I don't know, I guess I'd.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't think there's an avenue to go after the original borehole logger um on this kind of stuff, but there's definitely an avenue to go after the engineer of record, the geotech of record, that was saying, from the existing borehole data, I don't think any further investigation is required. You know, as far as liability goes, the liability is gonna fall on the geotech that is doing this report, not on the original person.
Oh, yeah.
Right? Because they, they chose to use this existing data and chose not to do any follow-up investigations.
So, so how does, I mean, so, so you have a, uh, you know, a, a, a statement on the borehole database that everybody has to click on and say that they acknowledge it. How does that uh match up with the fact that then you're accepting uh the use of that data in a way that uh?
That is why we have come to you guys, because we have been accepting it um only on residential, and that's why we were coming to you. And if that is a mistake to have been allowing that, then that's why we need the support of a resolution from the GAC saying, hey, no, this data, existing data should not be used. Um, and it needs to be supported by site-specific, you know, at least if, if you'll review the sections that say that they need to be confirmed as acceptable and can be confirmed by existing data, review those and see where we have justification. I mean, I see one immediately from questionable soil. You know, I mean, if, if there's a location in town that has questionable soil that you can't confirm from existing borehole data, then, then that would be our justification, saying, we know that this is a problem in these areas, in this specific zone. Um, and we are going to require you to do an actual borehole, or test pit, or XYZ. I know you guys, and this is, and this is the challenge that I have right now, is you guys are saying, do site-specific. Some of you are saying, do site-specific, but then I, when I ask what specifically to do on the site, you say, it's up to the engineer of record. And if the engineer of record decided to just walk on the site, what justification do I have? What, what fallback do I have to say no at that point? Unless you are going to define what site-specific means and what minimum standard that is. If we wanna leave it open to the engineer of record to decide, I think we need to be clear that that's what, that what we're doing. And if there are areas where we say that they need to provide a minimum amount, then we need to define what that minimum amount is.
Yeah, the, the problem with, uh, I mean, you know, the problem with walking down that path of, of uh uh minimums is that, uh, you know, there's such a wide variety of, of solutions, like engineering solutions that, and those engineering solutions drive the investigation. For example, if you decide to have a pile-supported structure versus a shallow foundation, your, your exploration program will uh look very different um in, in both cases, right? Um, and so, so it, it to like suss out every, you know, every possible, you know, uh, approach, and, and, you know, what's?
What if we came up with five to ten approaches? And then said anything outside of that, they had to go to the GAC. If we came up with the five to ten most common approaches that will be used on a residential project, I think ninety-five percent of the projects coming through would use that five to ten approach. Um, and you would only see five percent of stuff coming through for the GAC to say yes or no on, um, you know, that would be outside of that scope. Um, you know, that would be outside of that scope.
It seems like you guys need a geotechnical engineer on staff.
We can't even find, we can't even find to fill our regular positions, let alone a a specialty position like a geotech. So. But I'll let them know that you that you say we should get it, add that into the resolution. That you recommend that we get a ge- uh geotech on staff.
Well, Daniel, I think like that that point, you know, that we we just made here is that, you know, it's so, everything is so um. Unique, everything, every project is gonna be different and, you know. To say that, you know, you you can't use information that you have. Uh, I don't know, it. To mandate like every every even like five or ten scenarios, it's like. There's gonna be things that fall in between those two, you know, and it it seems like that's going down like a wormhole of. Of uh, you know, looking for making things way more complicated and trouble and uh. I really still feel like, you know, if engineers, you know, says, you know, we need deep boring because we're doing piles or, you know. Or this old well from, you know, two hundred years ago, doesn't cut it because, you know. Or they could say, it's fine, because, you know, we're on a flat slope and, you know, these things stay together. Yeah, you might get some cracking, but, you know. Homeowner doesn't wanna build a, you know, do ground treatment. I mean. I think it's kind of up to uh the owner, the residential construction to decide, you know, the level of effort they want to put into a building as long as it remains, you know, safe, you know. But um, yeah, and kind of go back to that whole disclaimer about. We have all this information that was gathered kind of by the Muni or by consultants or by the state or whoever drilled it. To say because it appears on this page, you can no longer use it is maybe inappropriate. You know, I think it's again, it's like, you say, you might not wanna use this or, hey, these have reports that go with them and they're not here, so the context is missing. So be warned, but um kind of using your own risk kind of thing. Um, no, no guarantee or warranty implied or, you know, whatever, so um. But to say that, you know, you're not allowed to use information because it appeared on that site is uh to me a little bit weird.
So I I'm gonna maybe jump in here, uh. You know, when we first started talking about this, there was a proposal, an example proposal that was that was put up where where a firm had had done this. And yeah, some of it was redacted, you know, but we all know exactly who that was. I probably know that engineer better than anybody here. Cause I worked for him for nine years. So, it you know, and and I look at a guy like that. And he is an engineer who. Doesn't need us to. Force him to make decisions, you know, he he he's willing to stick his neck out and, you know, use. Use this existing data on certain projects because he has a, you know, forty years of experience telling him. When and where that's appropriate. There are sites where I know he would not rely on existing data. And there are sites where I know he's so familiar with the Anchorage Bowl, so familiar with these specific sites. He's comfortable taking that risk and putting his license on the line, right? So, you know, specific specifically, he's talking about this one instance of that of that example um proposal we all saw. So it it's a tough call because, you know, when you've got these engineers who have. Who are good engineers with forty years of experience and they they do good work. Um, you know, former members of the GAC uh are the are is who we're talking about here, they. I struggle with with tying. The hands of somebody like that because. Of the risk of, you know, somebody who doesn't have that that judgment uh or that risk tolerance. To. You know, to rely on that, to know when he's comfortable. Uh, not collecting site-specific data. It's.
I I still don't know who you're talking about because I did such a good job redacting that document. So it could be anybody. He or she uh is an engineer though of record and uh I I tend towards. In in my practice, whether good or bad, I tend towards um relying on people to use their their stamp judiciously. And giving them the leeway to make the decisions they need to make to to do a project safely. It it is their license, it is their stamp, and I don't like to put minimum requirements on. For people to do stuff when they don't need to, uh, when they have the experience to know it or or the. The appetite for for that liability, it's it is ultimately their liability and unless it it goes to a a life safety concern. You know, of imminent danger, then I I tend to try and and trust the engineer. Within reason, um, but if we are going to be telling them that they have to do site specific, then then that is where I would have to say that we need to define. What that is. Um, and that's where that's where I think. That's where I think we have the biggest gap between our options here is is either. We give them the leeway on these residential projects to to use existing data. Because it is a lower risk and because we we trust the engineers to make the right decision, the right call, when they have the data available to them, or. We have to say, no, you, when it, when you do this, if you're using site, if you're using existing borehole data, you have to back it up with site specific. And here is the definition of what site specific means when we say it has to be backed up. And then there's this big gap in the middle of what you guys would love to say, which is just do site specific and define nothing and and that is not gonna be adequate. Um, that is not an adequate solution here because that means nothing to anybody. Um, to say that, right? Do whatever you feels right, is 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 great backup and support for the GAC to wash their hands of this. Because they told them to do site specific, but didn't tell them what to do. And which is great liability protection for the GAC, but I don't think that is the intent of the GAC is to protect themselves. The GAC is supposed to be an advisory body to help the municipality make these sort of decisions.
At the same time, any any reasonable geotechnical engineer will see site-specific. Explorations and. Know what that means and be able to make the judgment call on what's needed at a site. I think it would maybe. Give them, if there was something that said, hey, site-specific is required, it would give that the engineer the. The backup to tell their clients, hey, you have, we have to do this and it's gonna cost more and. You know, it's required, so we're gonna do it. I I I don't think we have to define what site-specific explorations mean. Any any reasonable engineer will interpret that and. Do what's needed.
I mean, the the reasonable engineer that provided that report to us. Um, knows that it says that they shouldn't be using that data and then they did and they didn't do any site specific. Um, sure, so to say do site specific could lead to them doing a a walk of the site. We we already said that, like, if they decide to walk out on the site and say, yeah, it looks like I thought it would out here, we would generally accept that.
Right, I mean, you know, I I think we're conflating the kind of the both the problems, I mean. To say that you're you're requiring a site specific and then therefore therefore you're gonna get, you know, this, you know, this. Absolutely, you know, full legit analysis and report that, you know, that based on pure data. Uh, versus, you know, you're gonna get somebody, somebody uses a boring from half a mile away that's on that site that has that was drilled three hundred years ago. I mean. If somebody wants to do a really bad job and there's no policing of it, they could go out there and you said they could walk the site, they could do one P probe or they can do. You know, five foot boring and say, yeah, we did it, we satisfied the requirement. I mean, if someone's intent is to just do something super cheap. Because that's what the client ultimately wants and that's all they want, then requiring the site specific isn't gonna change that. And then going down the rabbit hole, trying to say like, well, if you have piles, you'd be need to be, you know, like basically doing a. Kind of a presumptive drill plan, you know, for every conceivable project to me is, you know. I mean, this is kind of why we hire the engineers to just to do the job and. Yeah, you might get some battles out there, but yeah, again, that's that's the board to worry about. And we're talking about life safety. fundamentally, if this is like, you know, kind of worried with the life safety, you know, honestly, if someone is a, you know, getting some settlement and their, you know, foundation settles a little bit. You know, I don't think it's worth drilling, you know. Hundreds of thousands of dollars of test holes to prevent someone's house from cracking, you know, in the in the future.
Like, I I think what. I ideally, if I were to be the decider and I I could say what everything was. I I I would love a resolution. That would clarify for residential projects, the distance that existing borehole data can be used from a site. And if you were outside of that area for your existing boreholes, it's not reasonable to use that data. Um, and then to probably add in, if you are going to not do site specific, then you need to be able to answer the. Sections of the code that say you need to have a solution, right? Like the questionable data. Like the the soil classification that you can't get if you don't do an actual site specific. Any any of those items that are listed in the IBC, we could we could say that these things need to be responded to. To justify not doing site specific. That would be, I think, a great way to protect everybody because it does leave a lot of leeway to the geotechnical engineer. To decide what is. What is going to be adequate on site if it if it needs site specific and they can't answer those questions. You know, then then it's like, okay, well, I couldn't answer those questions in my geotech report, so I am going to have to do a a test pit or something, right? To get that information that I wanted. Um, and then also on the distance, it protects everybody because i- i- it at least puts some guardrails on what we can accept. Like you're saying, something from two hundred years ago that's. Twenty miles away is not going to be adequate probably for for this site, you know, but if it's within. Fifty feet or a hundred feet, you know, could we say that that's a limit? Not saying that that's. What we will always accept or will be adequate, but to say you can't go outside of this and expect us to accept it at the municipality. Would be would be great, you know, because then it does still leave a lot of leeway to the geotech. To decide, you know, okay, well, they said I could go a hundred feet away, but the borehole that's a hundred feet away is garbage. Um, so I shouldn't be using that one, so I'm gonna have to do a site-specific test. Uh, or, you know, they'll say, well, I don't wanna accept anything at for my record, for myself, that's not closer than fifty feet away. You know, because I know that it can change here and so I'd I will not choose any data. Even though they would let me go to a hundred feet away, I'm only gonna choose data within fifty feet. You know, something like that, I think, would be. What I would hope to get um on this topic for a residential use is just some guardrails.
Well, I guess I see it as, you know, you're current, you require a geotech report. And so I still think it should be left up to the geotech engineer to decide what, you know, what what's usable or not. And certainly if you, um, you know, when you're going through the uh permit. Application and you you see something like, well, you got a steep slope there, you know, I don't see how you did this analysis, you know, you could certainly go back with. Questions and have them like clarify, you know, and say we need more information on how you were able to do flexibility analysis. Over your assumptions and it's like, yeah, that's not, you know, so having some sort of like, um, you know, I like the idea of having like a. Something that where it's it's it can be waived and it generally is waived, but you have the authority to require, you know, when you see something that doesn't look. Adequate, you can say, we see a potential problem here, we know there's. A problem, we know you didn't do enough analysis to quantify that problem, you know, now we now we're gonna require it, you know, but it's. If that's the exception rather than, you know, requiring something for everything.
Well, it kind of sounds like. You're looking for for something that that functionally says. You have to produce a geotech report that checks all these boxes that you're supposed to check in the IBC. So basically. Do your job, check the boxes.
Yeah, yeah, effe- effectively, do your job. You you know, the the guardrail on using the existing borehole data would be helpful so that we have at least. Some range to say, hey, you chose something that's three hundred feet away. I don't think we should use that, um, because we have a. Policy that says a hundred and fifty feet away is the max. I think that would be a reasonable guardrail that the GAC could make a recommendation on.
Yeah, but then you you go back to, you know, what John was talking about, how a lot of these areas where we require geotech reports are, you know. Because we're trying to verify the presence of these old crapily backfilled grobbins, right? What, hard to put a minimum distance on that because, you know, ten, ten, twenty feet away could be. Totally different subsurface conditions uh in in areas where, you know, we think there's grobbins. How do you put an appropriate minimum on on a, you know, how far away the data could be?
Well, I think I I I think that gets into a gray area, Cody, that we we've mentioned is is it goes to the engineer to decide, the geotech to decide. If they need more data. Um, but to put a guardrail in general for all across Anchorage so that we don't have. Somebody trying to justify using data from super far away would be what I would would look for. Cause you're saying, yeah, this geotech knows what he's doing and he'll know if he needs to do more data. We make a recommendation, a recommendation, not a requirement. That you get three boreholes. Um, it I think in the footprint or just outside the footprint, something like that, where you're gonna put the house. That's our recommendation. I'll tell you, that has not happened. I- in a long time on these sites. Um, if they do anything at all, maybe one borehole, and it may not be where they put the building in the end, so. Are 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 they getting the data that you think they should? Um, we leave that to the geotech to decide already. This would just be for, this would just be for the existing borehole map to say, okay, hey, we'll let you use this data, but we won't accept it if it's further away than this. Um, and it's still required for you to figure out whether it's good data to use or not, if it's close enough to your site or not. It's not you saying this data within a hundred feet is good data, it's just saying the data outside of a hundred feet isn't reasonable.
Yeah, remember that we've also all been part of projects where we drilled for a particular footprint or, you know, a bridge or something. And we hit a car, you know, I mean, that happened to the port, we drilled, you know, that was drilled specifically for that building and. Couldn't drive piles, right, or something. So, you know, we do that for bridges all the time. We hit obstructions or something, you know, we don't know exactly what we're gonna encounter, so. You know, you can be drilling specifically for a site and not characterize it adequately, so. I don't know, I mean, there is risk, I mean, we can't. You know, see everything. And yeah, you could be drilling, you know, on the on the property, five feet from the building and hit a pocket of, you know, nice gravel. But the rest of the site could be buried or silt or something, so. You know, there is just risk. I guess, you know, back to, you know, we're talking residential here, this is.
So I just, I just wanted to mention that, you know, the the intent of the the current seismic desire is collapse prevention. And so we had, you know, buildings that had differential settlement of like two feet during the two thousand eighteen earthquake and they didn't collapse, right? We had, we see, I've seen pictures from the sixty-four where the house was broken half and it didn't collapse. Um, so I guess the, you know, what, and it would be kind of cool if uh this was here, but you know. Uh, yeah, what is the um. Likelihood of of a building collapsing, you know, due to the ground movement. Um, you know, it it seems like typically they've stayed together, they just moved, you know, they settled or. Slid down the hill or whatever. Um, but they didn't collapse. So I don't know. It seems like that should be considered as well. You know, basically, every report I've seen probably for the last. Couple of years I've been, you know, I've shown the lights to the sites have been have been stable. You know, a lot of the land's been built on already, but uh the most of the reports I've seen lately have been in, you know, to the area that's uh. Uh, you know, south of the turning in slide area. Um, that area, so, uh, but they've always come up as stable when I when I've gotten a report over there. Uh, you know, obviously, these have been the using existing borings, but there's a lot of existing borings out in that area that are that go fairly deep too, so. It's not like they're all useless borings out there. But, you know, being being that the the intent is collapse prevention. Uh, it seems like, you know, some some leeway has to be given because of that as well.
So Wayne, you're saying you don't have a problem because everything will stay up?
Well, I'm, I'm more, I'm, I'm almost of the opinion of that, if we're not, if, if, if they're, if, if, if we're going to allow existing boreholes to be used, it seems like that a lot of the areas can be already taken out as even needing a geotech report. So we've had enough reports in those areas that basically say that those areas are stable. Um, there's enough, there's enough geotechnical data there to say that those areas are stable, or if they are unstable, they're, 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 it's, it's to, it's to a, it's, it's not so unstable that it's going to cause the building to collapse, basically the structure to collapse. So, you know, it's kind of one of those things where, you know, I'm not going to say that we shouldn't have geotechnical reports, but it seems like there should be areas that we can at least get, take out of requiring a geotech report because there's enough boreholes there to already say that area is stable.
Yeah, and at that point
extent of the historical investigation, that shouldn't negate the need to do something project specific, like that, that the codes have changed, each project is going to be a little bit different, there needs to be some degree of geotechnical analysis.
And, and on, and on, and on commercial, I'm, that's, I'm fine with that, I'm just talking about residential only right now. Um, you know, if you're looking at a residential structure, um, again, yes, it's, 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 there, there's obviously going to be people be in there a lot, you know, but it's not like there's going to be uh, hundreds of people in there or even, you know, 20 people in there at one time, you know, maybe during a party or something, but typically speaking, there's going to be a handful of people or a couple handful of people in the structure. And again, we, we've seen, you know, like I said, pictures from the 64 where a house was broken half and it wasn't felt, we had differential settlements of two feet in the 2018 where, you know, the house, that basically the house wasn't really damaged that much, it just settled on one side. Um, so it's kind of like, um, you know, especially since we have, there's like, like I said, there's hundreds of boreholes like in turning in, the turning in area. There's hundreds, there's a couple hundred, right, I mean, there's a ton of them out there. So it seems like that, there should be specific areas at least that we can basically say, you know, we have this much de- geotechnical data already out there, we can say that that's stable. Um, and like I said, every report I've gotten from that area in the last probably three or four years has always come back as stable. And I think uh, it's been shown as stable from the other report from like 1991 or whatever it was, that that area was stable, globally stable, obviously, but that, but the local stability is really that northwest part where the slide occurred, right? That's where you have all those grobbins and stuff like that where the, they might have put trash in there or whatever, I misspell, so, um, but anyway, that's seemed like to me that if we're going to go some route where we're allowing existing boreholes, there should be a way that we can just say, okay, well, we have this many boreholes over here. Is this place stable or not? And if it's stable, then we just say it's stable and if it's not stable, then we keep it as zone five or whatever and say geotech reports is required there because we know it's unstable.
Yeah, and I think Wayne brings up a, a, a good point on, on that intent and, and you know, John, you talked about this before in some areas of town that don't need to be four or five, those areas where they could use existing borehole data that are outside of this grobbon zone, you, you know, where, where our concern is about these grobbins to get this site specific data. We've focused a lot on that area saying, well, you know, if you're 50 feet away, then, you know, that you could have something within 25 feet that's, that's garbage. Um, one, i- if the building's not going to collapse, are we very concerned or just partly concerned? And two, um, that has to do with just the grobbins is our main concern, and if you can prove without doing a site specific data that you're not in a zone that would have grobbins, should we require them to do site specific? Um, you know, do we have areas of town that we know are not going to be a grobbon site? Um, that we already were considering to remove from the four or five areas of the hazard map? Um, that we'd say, hey, you don't need to do more if you do your site specific because that's what's required. Or if you do your geotech using existing borehole data, uh, and you find that it looks good, you don't need to back it up. But this area that has grobbins, that we do need to get specific data on, you do need to do site specific because we have those concerns about questionable soil.
Yeah, and this kind of goes back to Murray's and, you know, Seth kind of brought this up, I, maybe a year or so ago, maybe 18 months ago where, you know, in L Street Slide, he said that, you know, we have this site where we have, we've, you know, we've had four or five geotech reports around this site that basically say that the, it's stable in that area. Can't, why can't we just use that to say that this site is stable as well? Um, you know, and it was decided then that no, you can't do that. Um, but it's kind of one of those situations where again, if it's collapse prevention and there's a bunch of data there that says it's stable already, even though this specific site may be unstable, but, you know, given that there's a bunch out there already saying that it's stable, you know, the area there is stable, say it is somewhat unstable. You know, what's the likelihood of the, the structure collapsing, doing, you know, due to the movement that occurs? You know, and I, again, that's more of a structural question than a geotech question, but um, it's kind of like I said, you know, we've seen evidence where structures can, you know, support movement without collapsing. You know, it's just a matter of how much movement it can move, you know, support before it collapses.
Hey, Daniel, I have, I have a couple of questions. When, when you receive a, a, a geotechnical report that, that is based solely on existing information, how is the, typically, how, how does the engineer um, describe the subsurface conditions at the site? Do they, do they, do they typically provide a, you know, for our design, we assume this soil column, or how, how does that, how's that typically handled that you, as, as you've experienced?
Yeah, Wayne, it would be better to answer that question and see, seen a lot more of these.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've talked about this in the past, and like, I think it did last week even. So basically, yeah, they just take the data, the, the actual borings and across that section and they kind of estimate the, based on those borings, they estimate what the section is going to be on the site and then they plug those soil, that soil profile into the software with the different fees and cohesion and things like that. And they just provide us, you know, a software run of, I don't know what software they're using. Um, uh, uh, but yeah, that's, it, it's just use that and they, you know, they make assumptions. If it's, if they only have 30 feet of data, they have to make assumptions for depths greater than 30 feet.
Yeah, so, so they'll have, they'll have an explicitly described, this is our
Yeah, we see, we see the cross section of the site with the, it says this type of soil from this depth to this depth with this fee and this cohesion and, you know, the next type of soil from the next, you know, depth profile and so forth down.
And then, so, so if they have that, is there i- in, in the report, are there, are there disclaimers or caveats saying, you know, we relied on existing information, the conditions at this site might be different, blah, blah, blah? Is there language like that in the report to basically absolve them of?
Uh, so there, there's, there's some language, something like that, but it's more of kind of what I think John was saying about how most geotechnical engineers have a disclaimer at the, their, end of their report that says something about the data and stuff like, it's not, it's not necessarily that they're saying this is based on existing data and this site may be different, it's just more of
They're boilerplate language.
Just the boilerplate stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I could tell you that when I, 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 I assume that they do everything in the software right, I don't know anything about that. The, the slope stability software, so I'm assuming that they collect, you know, they click all the button, correct buttons and stuff like that, so. Um, so once they give us the soil profile and it seems to master, you know, proximity of the boring, I, again, they do have to make assumptions a lot of times because the borings don't always go down 50, 60 feet, they're usually a lot, you know, shallow or not. Um, but they usually just assume whatever was at the bottom, that's kind of what it continues on down unless they, you know, know something extra about the site, maybe they'll assume something different, but um, for the most part, that's what we see and then, like I said, I just accepted it, like, it's a black box, but I'm assuming that the software is doing it correctly and I'm assuming that the, the person who inputs the stuff is inputting everything else correctly other than the soil pro, which would, soil profile, which I can review.
Yeah, and is there any, is there typically any, ever, ever any justification narrative in the, in the report for, 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 um, not, you know, not going out and getting more data, is it, you know, is, is there a, you know, is there something to, to explain the reasoning of why they're, they're using existing information or, or commentary on the quality of the data, reliability of the data and things like that, or is it just assumed that that stuff is?
Not really, they just assume that the, that the data is, you know, similar across the, the, the cross section, basically, you know, they'll, they'll, like I said, they'll kind of estimate the site based on the data that's around it.
Yeah.
And, and a lot of times, some of these, like I said, sometimes it's, you know, it could be within a couple hundred feet, but other times it could be, you know, three or four blocks away, so.
Yeah, 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 I don't know, I, I get what you're saying, Daniel, about, you know, if, if we, if we say, you know, if the municipality says, hey, we need to have some site specific, you know, information and, and the, and you leave it up to the engineer to decide what that is, and even if it's walking on the site, um, it, it would, it would justify because we're not providing any guidance there, but I think what having, because it seems to me like right now, and, and this is my opinion, I, I, I believe that some form of site specific work should be done for most projects, I'm not going to say all, but, but 95% of them, you know, um, depending on circumstances. Um, there needs to be some form of con- confirmation of what's out there, what your assumptions are, are, you know, and it's not just the engineer protecting themselves, but it's, you know, protect, protecting the interest of their clients and, you know, the other designers in the project and all that other stuff and, and if the, and right now, it doesn't seem like there's anything in the municipality that, that really makes or, or forces the issue on, on confirming existing conditions. And so even if the, even if the statement is just something needs to be done, the engineer decides what it is, I think it sets an expectation that doesn't exist now. And I think it's an important expectation to set. And then what that does is it forces the engineer to at least acknowledge that the thought process took place because they were required to think about what site can confirm, confirmation needs to happen. And then it would have to be in their report, it, they would have to, they would have to essentially justify it, you know, we, you know, we reviewed the existing information, we walked around on the site and looked at the surface and based on our ser, based on our observations and the existing data, we think the soils are this. And, and it's, you know, it might not be very satisfying in certain situations and it might not even be appropriate in certain situations, but I think it really puts the onus in a more concrete way on the geotechnical engineers to at least, you know, back it up essentially, um, with some words and some acknowledgement in the, in the reports they provide because that's, you know, it's, it's real easy to just look at a database and look at some, some boring logs for some old projects and just say, hey, here's a soil profile, but, but if they're, if the expectation is set and they have to go through that process, even if it's half-assed, um, at least they have to do it and that, that's kind of, that's, that's, that's where I stand on this stuff, that's why, that's my opinion.
And I, I, I think, I, I, I generally agree on, on a lot of that, that they need to do something site specific. I, I think clarification that it's not always required to do site specific, because I mean, Kyle, you would say you'd always do site specific, but I mean, this, the IBC does give an exception that we can accept stuff that is, is, does not include site specific if there's enough e- existing data nearby. And that is to specifically satisfy the scope of the investigation question that they have in IBC. Um, so I, I, I'd like a, a review of that from you guys to, to see how that fits into this conversation. You know, because some of these probably won't apply to us, but others, to make sure that they justify in their report. If they choose not to do site specific, then I would like them to be justifying that choice, right? Um, thanks, Cody. Uh, so I think it'd be really good to have that support from you guys. The, the support just gen- generally being provide site specific does put a lot of a lot more onus on the engineer of record to decide what site specific means, but I would also still like to give them the ability to choose not to do site specific if they can justify it. Because a- as, as we discussed, you know, it's not always going to be required to do site specific. We have very specific concerns about not doing site specific for specific zones because we know the soil underneath may not be good. Um, but not always would we say that they need to do site specific, you know? As John said, to some areas in town that are four and five, we should take off of the map. Basically saying you don't need to do geotech, um, if you're doing residential. The Eagleview one? No, the, the Eagleview one, no, that's okay. That was, that one's onsite. Okay. Um, yeah, I, 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 I think that there's, there's a lot of room where, where even, even the GAC would agree, we don't need to do geotech for residential projects in general. And so to, to require it whenever it says that it's four or five and to make sure it's site specific, when we have zones in town that we're not worried about being four or five and we're considering removing from the map, seems already additionally onerous if they can already say, if they can already prove out that it's not required for those sections in the code. Like, if geotech was required across the board, on every site, on every project, no matter the zone you were in, then I'd, I'd feel like we'd have a, a larger case to say, a general note of site specifics always required, leave it to the geotech to decide what that is. Uh, but because we already have this rule that is site specific, no geotech is required on any residential projects unless you're zone four or five. And now we're questioning some of our zones four and five, we do have this gray area of like, well, if we have to do site specific on them because they're in zone four or five, but we don't think they need to be zone four or five, shouldn't we be able to have the leeway to accept not doing site specific based on existing borehole data? That says that it's good enough? Because we agree that it's already good enough?
Yeah, but, but wouldn't you like the, the engineer who's doing the work to, to justify that to you rather than you have to decide? And then, and then you can, and you can decide whether or not his justification makes sense?
Yes, yes, I, 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 I would, and that's why I'm asking you guys for your, your knowledge on the requirements of this section that says justify, the building official can exempt it if, if you justify not doing site specific for these sections of the code, for that information that, that, that's required. Um, just a, a better outline for us so that we can better enforce that requirement, like, hey, did you justify not doing site specific on this? Because this says, a subsurface soil investigation shall be performed to determine whether the existing groundwater table is above or within five feet below the elevation of the lowest floor level where such floor is located. Saying groundwater table, yeah, is very important, let's make sure that they do provide that, it, the boreholes do show what that is and they can justify that it's acceptable. Right? Oh, it says five feet specifically, d- did you prove that? If you didn't prove that it's under five feet, then you need to do site specific. Um, and to write that into their report saying, hey, we are meeting this groundwater table requirement. Um, so we're not worried about that. Deep foundations, if they're going to be doing deep foundations, then there's a whole list of things that they want to be included. If you guys could review that and we can discuss wh- when that would be required to be made sure that it's in the geotech report, probably only when they're doing deep foundations. Uh, you know, rock strata, if they're going to be bearing on, on, on bedrock, not likely a requirement here in Anchorage, we don't have a lot of good bedrock that they're going to be putting these on, at least not for residential. Um, so it'd be silly to have them make that statement that they're meeting that requirement. Because I could just tell them like, hey, we need you to justify every single one of these items in here. But I would, I would like the GAC's input on what these mean. Um, and, and when it makes sense to do enforcement on them and when it doesn't make sense to do enforcement on them, at least as far as residential is concerned. I mean, commercial, we're just requiring them to do something. Um, residential, we don't require them to do something a lot of the time. So a better definition of when they do have to do something, what does that mean and should they have to do it?
I guess you, you could make a case that if there is a project of a similar, similar scope, size, parameters adjacent to, you know, this proposed location, you know, you, you could make a case that, you know, that, you know, setting aside the, should you or should you not be allowed to use historic information from not your investigation, but if that information is available, if somebody is allowed to use it, and that adjacent project was similar and included, you know, the level of investigation appropriate for whatever your proposed project is, your proposed house. I don't think it's unreasonable to say, yeah, you can use this adjacent investigation that would be, you know, very similar to what you would do at this particular location. Unless you're, I don't know, in a location where you have reason to believe there may be a lot of heterogeneity. heterogeneity or, you know, you're near a slope, then you've got concerns about stability or like, I mean, there's, there's so many. I'm sorry, Daniel. I know you hate the fact that geotecs go, well, that depends.
I'm used to it, Amy. Especially for me, I'm very used to it.
Oh, yeah. I, I just don't know how to define, hey, you need to follow the code. And I mean, I guess in my mind, it's, if somebody's proposing a deep foundation, then they need to check all the boxes that, you know, the, the code says you have to check, right? If somebody's doing a shallow foundation, well, don't need to worry about the deep foundation requirements because they're not applicable. Um, that feels like, to me, that seems like something you would not need to explicitly define because it's already in the code. And the code doesn't say check every box for everything. It is check the boxes that are appropriate for your project.
How about this? It sounds like to me that GAC does not have an appetite to write a resolution on this matter. However, if I write a supporting handout with what I think makes sense. If the GAC is willing to review that during one of our regular sessions and we can discuss it, it does not need to be an official resolution, but I would like to set some guardrails on my end. So my reviewers know what they need to be looking for. Um, and then anything outside of that may come to the GAC uh, because we, we would need your guys' support on something that's outside of those bounds. Does that seem a reasonable direction to head with this? We don't need an official resolution, but I would like to put together some sort of handout or policy on how I think geotech reports should be handled for residential projects and get your input on it.
I think that's a great path forward. Um, you know, I think that's where like R eighteen, you know, kind of came from as well, um, is, is, I don't think, I don't think GAC, you know, drafted that language. I think it was developed and then reviewed by the GAC, um, and so on, so.
Yeah. I would just like to set some, some reasonable guardrails for acceptance. So, um, our reviewers don't have to come to you guys or go find a third-party geotech every time we get a geotech report that comes in. Um, you know, because I feel like, I feel like we could all, all agree that, um, a lot of this does rely on the geotech using their, their engineering experience to make the right decision for the right project, but I would like to set some, some guidelines for what we can accept in a geotech report. Um, you know, a minimum standard of what should be included on this kind of stuff, especially when it comes to using existing data. I don't want to just make a blanket statement that everything always requires site-specific because as, as we've seen, not everyone agrees, not everyone agrees that site-specific is required. It does go very often to the geotech to decide what level of site-specific would be required, if any at all. Um, so I think leaving that to the, the geotech to decide for the most part, I think is, makes the most sense. We do have a lot of people here. Um, with probably a different idea for every, every project. If we brought a project before the board and everyone wrote down what they thought they should do, it'd probably be different from every single person. Similar in a lot of ways, I'm sure, but different. Um, and that's the challenge that we have on, on writing a resolution like this. I think that's what we're coming to. And if everybody just wants to send me a thumbs up if they did agree or a thumbs down if they disagree, and then that doesn't have to be an official vote. It's just kind of like a a discussion on, on a direction that I can head.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I, I'll, I'll just throw out that, uh, you know, I, I kind of, it doesn't matter if it's uh, seismic hazard zone four and five, I still would, uh, 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 recommend that, uh, if it ain't your work, you can't steal it from somebody else. Um, and I, I just don't, uh, I, 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 I don't think that that's, uh, uh, good engineering practice. So.
Yeah.
It may be right. But, but, uh, but that, uh, you know, uh, I guess that's for the courts to decide.
Fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the IBC not very clear on where that this existing data may be coming from. Uh, doesn't say that you have to have any knowledge of where it came from. It's just, does it exist or not? Um, and I think we've, we've accepted before, um, on projects, especially with additions. You know, if there's record drawings that show a bearing pressure, we've allowed them to just pull that bearing pressure for, you know, nearby buildings. Um, you know, and, and yeah, it's a black box of like accepting someone else's data that they collected. Um, but it, it all goes to the risk of the, the risk onsite, I guess, for most of it, um, to choose that, use that data. Um, that's challenging.
I will say if anybody's against, you know, people using their data, um, I, 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 you know, I know it belongs to you and it belongs to whoever, you know, paid for the geotech report. Uh, please let us know, you know, I can always let you know when somebody is using your data on a report. So I have no problem doing that. Um, if you're against that and you want to know and you, so you can maybe call them and say, hey, you know, I don't want you using my data on your report. I'm, I'm happy to do that. So.
Yeah. Maybe everybody start, start writing like not for, for reuse uh, on all of your borehole data. So then when it gets put on the public map, uh, it says that on there.
Hey, Wayne, um, if you're willing to do that, um, I'd say for anything from Shannon Wilson that wasn't done for the Muni or for DOT, you should be on that list. And I'd appreciate that if you, if you'd give me a heads up if that was being done.
Okay, I can do that.
Yeah, same for Gold or WSP. So.
There, there's always the weird area with that. I'm sorry. This is kind of a little bit of a side, side discussion, but like theoretically whoever the client was, you know, owns, owns the report, owns the data. So I mean, I've, you know, over the course of various projects, I've reached out to, you know, property owners, homeowners and go, hey, I have reason to think you have a geotech invest, like, you know, geotech report, can I have it? And had people give me reports, at which point you're in, you know, arguably kind of a, an area where it's, I obtained the data through, you know, reasonable and ethical means, can I use it? Anyway, that is not necessarily a discussion for now, but.
Yeah. And Amy, I would, I would agree. I know that you've mentioned before, uh, how the, the borehole data map that we have kind of doesn't include the full report. I think that is not good on our part to, to include the full context of, of those reports. Um, that's a challenge I see in having that data.
Some do. Yeah, some do, I think, yeah.
Uh, but many do not. Many here think are just the borehole and, uh, and I, I, I feel like that could be a, a challenge for some people to use that data without the full context, but.
Well, but, but is it, does the Muni have the right to give away data that they don't own? I, I would.
So, so, you know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for Tim here, but Tim's statement in the past was anything that's been submitted for a building permit is public. Um, and so that's his, uh, his approach for, uh, taking the data and putting it out there. Um, I think, you know, some of us have talked about in the past, you know, we have certain aspects of, of what we put down on paper that, you know, shouldn't necessarily be public. I think Kyle's example was, uh, uh, de-watering rates or, or, you know, what have you for, for, uh, different things. And so, you know, some of that stuff, you know, shouldn't necessarily be public, but, but I think, you know, for, you know, from, uh, Tim's perspective, the stick logs are, are pretty benign. Uh, you know, information, um, and, you know, the, the devil in the details in, in other parts of the reporter are things he's tried to dodge, I guess, uh, you know, getting, putting out there. So.
Yeah, it's a challenge. Everything, everything that we get is FOIA requestable, I think, for the most part. Um, and so that's, yeah, that's the challenge.
We do have an official, like, you know, method that you have to request information, but uh, yeah, everything we have is public data. So anybody can come and request that.
Yeah. So we've just made it easier for people to, to get that data. Uh, I don't know. Was it a good idea to make a, a borehole map, everybody? Who came up with this?
I will say there is another group, I don't know if they managed to make themselves a company yet, who has been, um, na- nationally, uh, mining historic geotech data and publishing it on a map behind a paywall. Uh, and.
Yeah, they have some sort of software, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a Borg, Borg DM, boredom.
Boredom, yeah.
Anyways, um,
Wow.
That's a whole different, different thing, but, you know, for, for people who want data, there are multiple avenues to get it.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and digs, you know, digs is another example of, uh, of, of, you know, data that's out there and available, um, uh, you know, primarily for the project. Right?
I'm assuming that's D I G G S. It feels like it'd be a double G. Okay. I've never heard of it.
Yeah, federal, federal highways, uh, started it. Um, and, you know, it's a pretty extensive database. Um, and, and they've got a whole framework for how you, you can put data in there, but there's, there's two different aspects there.
Yeah. And I think the Corps of Engineers is actually in the process of integrating our
joining dig.
I, I don't know if it's going to be dig specifically. I think maybe I'm so, so confused by the inner workings of, of our agencies, but there, there is a
Same.
Something is in the works that's going to try to integrate all of the non-confidential, um, geotech data that the Fed has been collecting.
I think that's driven by like Vanessa Bateman, I'm guessing.
Yeah, well, Georgette more than, uh, Georgette more than Vanessa, but yeah. That was for. Anyways, sorry, massive tangent. Anyways, we could all, we could all get data. Anybody can go get the data. It's just a matter of knowing where to go. And then the question really is, do you have the context? Do you have the lab result?
And will the city accept it?
Yeah, well, the city's that, did the owner or property owner give you the report and say, go to town? Like, there's, there's there's so much nuance, Daniel, which is why you're never going to get a room full of geotecs to give you one answer.
I know, I know. I'm asking for the world from you guys and I appreciate you entertaining me.
Yeah, there, there are several examples though, in, in the, uh, information that was provided, Daniel, about what other, uh, municipalities and, and counties have done, um, on this topic. So um, from, you know, Las Vegas, Henderson, Nevada, and I, uh, you know, they specifically say thou shalt uh, advance one boring, uh, a minimum of fifteen feet or something like that. They've, they've essentially added a, another line item to eighteen oh three, uh, to, to amend it to include a requirement for onsite uh, geotech. Um, the, the other, uh, Los Angeles has, you know, a little more nebulous language, but, uh, but they have some specific guardrails as well. Um, and then City of Seattle, um, uh, they had pretty specific stuff too. So there is some guidance out there. Hopefully, uh, that provides a little bit of, of, uh, thought for you to do about what others are doing.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll look through this data as well and see what I come up with. When's our next meeting?
Well, that's one thing we were supposed to defi- or decide, right, Daniel, was whether we're having a Thanksgiving meeting or not. And we probably need to, uh, because we still had another topic um, that we haven't even touched yet. Uh,
Yeah, I was just about to raise my hand and say there are five minutes left in this meeting. We have two other items of business. Well, not business, two other items to discuss. One of which is, do you want to meet on November nineteenth or twenty-sixth? Or not at all?
Twenty-sixth works for me. I'm unavailable the week of the nineteenth.
Amy, you said twenty-sixth does work for you?
Correct. Twenty-sixth works.
Okay.
Yeah, either one's fine for me.
Does twenty-sixth not work for anybody?
I'm out that week, but I don't, I don't need to be around.
Does not work. Does not work for me.
All right, Kyle's out. Ooh, trading Amy for Kyle. Okay.
I might not be able to make it either. Um, depending on what my internet situation looks like in Nepal.
Okay. Could you guys make it on the nineteenth, you two?
I could, yeah.
I couldn't.
Okay. So you'd also be out. All right. Okay, we'll figure that out. Or I guess maybe we'll send something around.
Dangerous question. What if we bump it forward another week?
Into December?
Oh, no, no, other, other direction. Bump it.
Back. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
To the twelfth?
Yeah.
Does anybody? Brian, you can do it?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else have any conflicts?
Dave and I have a conflict with the CAC meeting that time, and I guess Dennis probably would as well.
Tough.
That's right, Stephen. I knew there was something on the twelfth.
I got you. Yeah, I got you, Dave.
I was like, that, that sounds busy. I don't know. Can't remember now what it was.
Okay, well.
Moving to a Thursday, the fourteenth. Ooh, curveball.
It's not a Tuesday. It's not a Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm fine.
That would work for me.
The fourth Thursday.
I can't do anything that week.
Okay.
Like herding cats with you guys. Goodness.
Yeah. It's a good thing we got a whole bunch of us. Uh, we can still manage a quorum either way.
That's good.
All right, maybe we'll send something out and we'll look at um, the fourteenth, twenty-sixth and the nineteenth, even though some people definitely can't make it to any of those. And then we'll do like a doodle poll or something.
Sounds good. Yeah, I think, thank you.
And the other thing, if I could quickly, I'll just share my screen. Um, the Assembly has a new ordinance looking at special limitation zoning. And so we were just, uh, seeing if the GAC could weigh in or just give us some thoughts on this, especially because there's a lot of areas. Special limitation zoning is like a zone with extra stuff attached to it. So there's a lot of areas in the Muni which have, like, here's an R three SL. This is down in Rabbit Creek. I don't want to zoom out because the layers take too long to load. Um, but here's R ten SL, which I think every R ten lot has an SL on it. And so we're just wondering, and, and there's more in the memo about does R ten need to be SL or can it just be R ten and require a site plan review if you're at a certain slope? Um, and the other question is a lot of these SLs might've come in before Title twenty-one was changed in like twenty twelve to twenty fourteen. So we're also wondering, is, does the code as it is now provide enough protections that you don't need a lot of these SLs? Because SLs, sometimes they're, they're about slope, they're about erosion risk. Other times it's just about aesthetics or uses or things that people don't like. So it's, it's hard and sometimes they're, they're layered on both. So sometimes you have uh, special limitation has a very clear relationship to health and safety. And other times you have one that has almost no apparent relationship to health and safety. So we would love if any of you could think about that and we could talk about it at the next meeting. In looking at some of these, say there were no special limitations zoning anymore. Would the existing building code and the existing steep slopes regulations in Title twenty-one provide adequate protection or do you think the level of protection that would, you would feel comfortable with? Um, because the big question is what, what problem are SLs solving? And are they really about health, safety or are they about something else? So here are some examples. I'm going to try and zoom up to Eagle River. Let's see if, if it'll, if it'll do it. But yeah, there, there are some up here too. And you'll see there's a lot of these SLs in these sort of steep slope zones. Um, but we're wondering, is this just because these were put in before we had stuff in, in Title twenty-one in twenty twelve to twenty fourteen? So that's our sort of question. We put it in a, a big memo. Um, if you have any questions, please let us know and then hopefully we can discuss it at the next meeting.
That was a great summary. Yeah, thanks.
Well, we look forward to your expertise. It's awesome to have. It is truly awesome to have a group like this that you can ask a technical question like this and you're going to get expert opinion, which is fantastic.
And you're going to get a lot of different expert opinion now. It's really good.
Why they call opinions.
I love it.
All right. Hey, thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
Appreciate it. Talk to you guys, uh, next month.
Have a good one, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.